Welcome, everyone. This is Mayor Commission Work Session. It's July 9th at about five minutes after 10:00. We have a chock full agenda today. And so we're going to start with number one, which is usually a good place to start. And this is going to be the recommendations from the Homeless Task Force. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Fana. Just a little background information. You may recall that I asked Mr. Fana to take on this task, to take a look at our homeless situation in terms of the kinds of services that are currently being offered and where the gaps are and how we might fill those gaps.
Good morning. Happy Monday to everybody. And I just want to first acknowledge the Task Force members themselves.
I think they're all here.
A lot of them are here in the room. So I want to thank them for their time and efforts. It was a great group, very enthusiastic, and they came up with some good ideas. And I saw a lot of great energy in the room. And it's a complex issue. And I think a lot of the folks, particularly those who don't deal with homelessness on a day-to-day basis, some of the citizens and the business owners that were participating, got to understand some of the complexities around homelessness that otherwise they may have not been exposed to. So it was really good in that sense. And they got to see how many things are already happening, not just here in the city, but countywide as well. And some of our county counterparts are here, so I want to thank them for being here as well. So as I mentioned, it's a complex issue. It was one that impacts really every metropolitan area in the country and really, I'd say, most metropolitan areas in the world. I mean, if you've traveled around, there's very few places you can go to that are larger cities where there is not a homelessness issue. And West Palm Beach is no exception to that. Trying to figure out where we're at at any given time is a bit of a challenge. And one of the ways that we do that is with a point-in-time count that's done on a yearly basis. It used to be every two years. Now it's yearly. Every January, a count is done citywide with the county staff and volunteers throughout the county to try to get a sense of where the homelessness issue is being impacted the most. And we did see, if you look at those numbers, we did see a slight decrease from 2017 to 2018. The numbers at the Philip P. Lewis Center have also kind of held steady, but, you know, we haven't seen any dramatic increases from 2017 to 2018. So it's hard to get really a grip on exactly what the numbers are. And in a minute, I'll tell you how we're going to try to do a better job at that here locally. But, you know, every city I've been to around or looked at around the state has struggled with this issue. I've looked at similar cities with similar demographics and maybe a little bit slightly smaller populations like Sarasota, Daytona Beach. Those areas have also struggled with homelessness. And if you look at areas, larger areas like Miami, City of Miami, Fort Lauderdale, and Tampa, obviously, they have much greater issues than we do. So it's not unique. Sometimes it seems like there may be some citizens who think we're the only place in the world that has homelessness. And we certainly struggle with it, as do other areas of the country and of the state. So the numbers are slightly down. When you look at, where you see the largest numbers in the city of West Palm Beach are in the two ZIP codes that encompass the downtown West Palm Beach area and also the north end of the city around Curry Park, basically the ZIP code that encompasses, what is that? 33401, no, I'm sorry, 33407 ZIP code. Those were the two ZIP codes where you saw the largest numbers in the point-in-time count. So one of the things that we're going to try to do over the next year and beginning in August is to do a census, a local census. And we've got staff from the Vickers House and Lisa Kemp, our community services manager that manages Vickers Houses here as well. So our Vickers House staff, along with our contract with Lord's Place, we're going to begin to go out on a quarterly basis and do a homeless census in these two ZIP codes. And we've mapped out the areas that we would be looking at. We're going to consistently go to the same areas during the same time of the year. And then we'll begin to get, I think, a better idea of how large or how small the issue is. And more importantly, what impacts our programs are having. And we can see a reduction over time, and we know we're on the right path. And that, again, will begin shortly, in the next couple, few weeks. We're going to do our first one. And that will be published online. We'll be mapping out exactly where folks are, and the public will be able to see on a map, basically a heat map, that'll show the concentrations of areas where there are homeless and what those numbers are. And we're going to try to, as best we can, get demographics, interview the folks, at least be able to see if they're male, female, any racial backgrounds and other demographics that might be important. So this will give you a basic overview of the system that's in place now, kind of countywide. So we have the Philip P. Lewis Center, which is the Homeless Resource Center on 45th Street. And that is a limited barrier homeless intake center. And it's a coordinated entry system, which is something that HUD really was harping on the last 10, 15 years. And that is to make sure that whatever services are being provided to the homeless are done so in a coordinated fashion and that intake is done consistently and that there's an intake process with the services then being provided to those individuals through that coordinated system. Philip P. Lewis Center's been open for, what, about 10 years now? Close to 10 years? Yeah. It's like a disco effect. And so part of that process is an intake and assessment. Currently has 66 beds at the Philip P. Lewis Center. And that is not enough to meet the demand. In order to be able to then be able to get folks into the services, there has to be a way to prioritize those services. And so there's an intake and assessment called the SPADA, which looks at different risk factors in order to score the individuals or the households. And that determines what type of service they get and whether they can actually get services. As I mentioned, there are 66 beds, but that's not the only option for most of the households. Most of the folks get other types of assistance. They could get rapid rehousing, which is basically temporary rental assistance, which generally lasts between six to 12 months. They may get permanent housing if there's something that happens to be available. There is also the options of getting hotel motel vouchers, which may be on an emergency basis. And typically, those are just a couple of weeks. And I think those are typically for families more so than individuals. So there's a few different options, but there are some folks that they're not able to get in any of those options because they just don't meet the risk factors. And there's got to be, there's limited resources. You've got to prioritize it in some way. And unfortunately, there's going to be some folks that don't get helped immediately. To help fill that gap, there are some other agencies that are out there doing their own thing, some nonprofits, some local churches at times will provide assistance to individuals to help them get housed through the Vickers House. We have our own programs. But the best way to do it is in a coordinated fashion as much as possible. I know the county is having discussions with them. They're working on some options of hopefully opening up another resource center on the south end of the county. We'll see if that gets through County Commission and all that process. But that will certainly help alleviate, I think, some of the pressures within the city because we happen to have the only resource center, homeless resource center, is within the city grounds. Of course, we have a lot of churches and other organizations providing food assistance, clothing assistance. So there's a whole network out there. It's not always as coordinated as some would like it to be. Certainly, I would like to see it more coordinated at times, but there is a number of resources that are out there.
Armando?
Yes.
You know, going back to the other resources, I guess the question I've always asked, and I don't know if I've ever really gotten an answer, but is there, and I say this, if I were to become homeless tonight, where would I go?
It would depend. Typically, the person's not able to get in that same evening unless there are some beds available. There are six beds that are set aside for kind of emergency overnight beds. And occasionally, those may, they may be one or two available, but it's rare. So a lot of times, when somebody's getting assistance through the Lewis Center, they may have to wait a few days before they can get in.
Is there any place that, so, I mean, and I've told you this, I think I've told you this story, but my daughter's a pediatrician. She called me up one night. One of her patients and the mother were homeless that night. And she said, "Where can I send them?" And I didn't really know how to answer that.
Yeah. And generally, with the families, we're able to get them in with the temporary assistance through the motel or hotel vouchers. But it may depend on the time of the evening. You know, if it's 2:00 in the morning, it's going to be tough. So it just kind of, it just really depends on each circumstance. But I know they try to get with the families. Adoptive Family is the organization that helps run that side of the house at the Lewis Center. And they try to get the ones with children into motels as quickly as possible or into rapid rehousing. But it is a process. And just getting them into an apartment is a process. They've got a lot of barriers a lot of times. They've been evicted previously. And so just finding an apartment can be a challenge.
Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you. Just for clarification, what exactly does limited barrier mean?
I'm sorry. I'm glad you asked that. Previously, one of the things that the homelessness system nationally required was sobriety and that you had to go through a series of hoops before you can get assistance. So a lot of those barriers have been reduced, both for common intake and the Lewis Center, but also in Housing First concept, which is let the person get their shelter or housing first and then look at the issues that they may have, whether it be mental health or substance abuse or whatever other issues they may have, work on those later. And so that's sort of the concept that they look at at the Lewis Center. They do have to abide by occupancy rules while they're there, but we're not asking for sobriety on day one. It's sort of unrealistic to ask for, let's say, example, an alcoholic. You're not going to get any assistance until you never have a drink again. That's probably not going to work, and the study shows it doesn't work. So let me talk about some of the resources that the city currently has placed into homelessness. One of the things that I think has been one of the most effective programs that we've had is a peer outreach and through the Lewis Center with some support from Vickers House as well. And Diana Stanley is here. Where are you?
Through the Lord's Place.
I'm sorry. What did I say?
Lewis Center.
I'm sorry. Lewis, through the Lord's Place. Diana Stanley is here representing Lord's Place. And so we've allocated $50,000 to that program through our Community Development Block Grant. And what that is, is those are folks who are going out and doing street outreach. A few of them are formerly homeless. They've been trained to do the outreach and engage folks. It's a long process when you're engaging the homeless, particularly those that are chronically homeless that have been on the streets for a long time. It's almost, it's for them going into a structured situation and housing is probably about as scary for some of them that have been on the streets for a long time as us going into homelessness. So it takes a long time to build their trust, get them off the streets, and they've had some success. Some of the folks who've been on the streets for a very long time have been taken off the streets and are in permanent housing right now. We also allocated an additional $50,000 for this program specifically for the Frequent User System Engagement Pilot Project, which is better known as FUSE. That is looking at those who are frequently utilizing services such as the justice system. They're being arrested multiple times. They're homeless. So they're interacting with the homeless system. They're also interacting with mental health systems and hospitals. We've identified, I'm part of that group. We've identified the top 25, basically, utilizers of those systems. We're still working on the hospital data because that's a little more challenging to get. But we do have mental health data, system data, and we have the homeless and we have the jails, the arrests, numbers. So we're working on the top 25. We should kick those services off fairly soon. And I see our representative here from FUSE. Thank you for being here, Jacqueline. And so that's going to help, I think, with those 25. And those are critical because those are the ones that cost society the most in terms of dollars and cents, but also in terms of visibility. Those chronically homeless that are constantly cycling in and out of jails, constantly cycling in and out of mental health or hospitals, those are the ones you typically see on the streets, that they're most visible, but they're also the most costly. So the idea is to focus the services on those individuals, get them housed, get them stabilized. And the end result, hopefully, is you save money over time because it costs a lot of money to have those folks on the streets, believe it or not. We've also allocated $50,000 to a housing stabilization program that provides temporary rental assistance up to $3,000. And that's run through our Vickers House location. Somebody have a question?
Yeah, we had a couple of questions. Commissioner James?
Thank you. How do we identify the folks, how do we identify those 25 top users?
We've gotten, there's been, databases have been matched to then identify the ones that have, they're in the homeless database, are accessing homeless systems, they've been arrested, is it two or more times? Three or more times in the past year? And they've had touches with the mental health system as well. And then we're working on the hospitals to get that data. So they've matched that data up to come up with the top 25 that use those three systems for now. A fourth one will be the hospital. So and then the idea is that the police department will have access to those. So if they pop up on their screen when there's, let's say, doing a, either potentially an arrest or just interviewing somebody and that person pops up, we'll be able to then redirect them to this type of program.
Commissioner, you had a question?
Thank you, Mayor. So this slide is very helpful. From a quantifiable number, does a city spend roughly half a million dollars towards this or approximately?
Half a million, actually, no. I'll get to, in the next slide, we're actually spending more than that because we're putting money towards permanent housing, which in one case, we're putting a million dollars.
So we'll have an idea after this next slide.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan, do you have a question?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Lambert?
Just to clarify the numbers that we're talking about as far as individuals. You said in the beginning, 27% and 9%. Is that of the total homeless population in the county?
Yes. No, I'm sorry. Those numbers were the total population in, let's see.
And just what kind of numbers are the?
Yeah, 27% of the ones in the city are within the downtown and then 9%, oh, sorry, 9% downtown in 2018, 27% were in the north end. The total numbers were close to 500, as I recall. Oh, actually, right here. 462 was the total number for the city. And that represents 54% of the countywide numbers. We're the largest city. We had the largest number of homeless, obviously. And we also have the largest number of public spaces and services, so we have the largest homeless population.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, I missed that number.
Yeah. So I mentioned housing stabilization. We also allocated about $47,000 to a youth homeless prevention program through Vitanova. And those are for young adults who are 18 to 24. Homeward Bound, which is a program that we utilize to help folks who can reconnect with either a family member or somebody outside of the area. That program is actually allocated between $8,000 to $10,000, and that's not city funds directly. We're getting that from the bus benches that we have throughout the city. There's advertisement revenue that comes from that. And we negotiated the contract with the provider that some of that revenue comes back to the city for this particular program, really any homeless prevention program we want to allocate to. But this has been a particularly successful one. We've had, what, probably 60 or so this year, folks that we've sent back or sent wherever where they can get housing. And we're working with the parking department to get additional revenues, excess parking revenues. That's actually supposed to be coming to City Commission, I believe, at the end of July. So you'll be seeing that, moving some of the SX parking revenue into this fund. So we'll have additional money, hopefully, with your approval for that as well.
This is the money that remains on the meters when cars switch out?
Correct.
So that money is going to come directly to dealing with homeless.
Yes. So that's, and that's great. I want to thank our parking director for that. Vickers House, and as I mentioned, Lisa Kemp's here. That's five full-time staff, and they deal on a day-to-day basis with homelessness issues. They operate both the Homeward Bound program and the Housing Stabilization program. And they just, they see folks who are homeless or in danger of being homeless on a daily basis. So some of the other things, we've had resources into the Real Change meters, the orange meters out in downtown. We installed those meters. We helped with the marketing. It's really meant to market for panhandling awareness, so folks are not providing funds to panhandlers, but they're putting in the meters instead. Honestly, it hasn't had the impact that I'd like to have. We're going to ramp up some of the marketing on it. That's a partnership with the Homeless Coalition. The funds go to the Homeless Coalition. But it's really wasn't, wasn't meant to be a fundraiser as much as it was to be an awareness thing. So we're working on ramping that up. And then the housing part, this is the most important. We recently donated a duplex to the Lord's Place with five bedrooms, and those are all occupied right now, two females and three males. As a matter of fact, some of the folks that were living right out here were.
And that's the second duplex that we've.
That's the third duplex. We actually donated a total of 12 units with three duplexes to the Lord's Place. And so in the last couple of years. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Can you just read out the website? Because I can't see it up above. And so for anybody watching this, if you could just read that out.
Sure. The website for the Real Change Movement, which is the meters, and folks don't have to donate through the meters, they can actually donate at the website, is realchangemovementwpb.org. They'll be able to get information where the meters are located, what the initiative is, and also be able to donate there as well. So we have the duplexes, and that's been successful because it's, again, low barrier. You can get folks in quickly and begin to stabilize them and hopefully get them situated in a more permanent housing down the road. We just donated a lot, and you'll be seeing on July 16th, Commission, a request for funding for $250,000 for Gulfstream Goodwill. And Ezra Craig is here representing Gulfstream Goodwill. That will provide six units of permanent supportive housing for developmentally disabled, new construction project. Most of the funds are coming from the state, through a grant from the state. And so we are providing the, kind of, the gap, and the county is also assisting us with that, as well as his Quantum Foundation. So even a small project of six requires four different funding sources to put it together. So it's quite complicated.
Armando, we have another question. Commissioner Neary?
Sorry. Let you get through this. These lot donations, which I think are great, but we're not just concentrating them in the Tamaran Corridor, are we? Is this across?
No. Actually, most of the lot donations have been for homeownership projects. This is an exception. Most of the donated lots that we've done have been for homeownership through Habitat for Humanity, Neighborhood Renaissance, and other programs.
Yeah, I didn't ask that question, right? So yes, familiar with that. What I'm saying is specific to the homeless issue. So for example, the duplexes that we've donated, is that citywide? Are we?
Well, the duplexes that we had were not in the Coleman Park area. They were in, where were they? Pleasant City area. So most of it is, most of the city owned lots, and duplexes in that case were in the north end. So yes, a lot of it has concentrated in the north end because we just don't have anything in the south end or the parts of the city.
Those were the things that we had already owned.
Right. But it's a good point. So we're also providing a million dollars in funding, and we've supported the Dr. Alice Moore apartments, which that is on the north end, but a little closer to Northwood, so it's not, it's not in the Tamaran Corridor.
What's the story on those? Are they moving forward or?
Yes, they're moving forward. They're in, they're already gone, they already submitted permit applications, and we should be pretty much good to go on that project. And that's going to provide 37 new units of supportive housing as well for people who would typically be in danger of being homeless. And some of those units are set aside for developmentally disabled, others just going to be affordable housing, lower-income housing. Looking forward to that project. It took a little bit to get there. It was a difficult project to get through, but I think it's going to be an outstanding project.
Yeah, they're going to have to do some outreach and stuff with the neighborhood.
Yes, they will.
Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you. So is the city doing that project? Are we building the housing and creating the infrastructure? Or are we partnering with?
No, we're providing, we're providing home funding, up to a million dollars in home funding, and it's being done through a developer, nonprofit developer out of Miami, Carrefour, which is.
It's a Carrefour house?
Very well-versed in, yeah. And it's partnership with Carrefour and Jerome Golden Behavioral Health Center. We're also providing $300,000 in Royal Palm Place, which is the Housing Authority project that's under construction right now. It's almost done. I think it'll be done in October. That's lower-income housing, beautiful. I mean, it's the last phase, and it's come out fantastic. Little spelling error there. But support for an application, I helped write an application for funding along with the county and the county housing authority, Palm Beach County Housing Authority, for a mainstream vouchers, which is a HUD, basically a Section 8 voucher, but it is allocated specifically towards those who are disabled and coming out of institutions. That's at least where they're targeting it. So that would help us in some of the cases because most of the homeless do have some verifiable disability. HUD's disability definition is pretty broad. So it would help us to be able to, in certain cases, help folks who are on the streets who may have some kind of disability, get them housed quickly. We'll see if we get the funding, but, you know, we did write the application. Of course, the police department, Chief Mooney's here. They do a tremendous amount of work and outreach with the homeless. They have an officer who's dedicated to that issue. I'm going to be traveling with Chief Mooney later this week to go visit a project that I'll talk about in a minute. And our EMT fire, you know, there's constantly issues with the homeless that they deal with. So there's a lot of resources that are going into this issue just now, not just from Housing Community Development, but from other departments as well.
So if you would, you may have already sent this to the commissioners and myself, but especially those two slides, when people tell you that we're doing nothing to address the homeless issue, you can whip out these two slides and show it to them and say, "No, we're doing, what, a million dollars worth of something to address the issue."
Yeah, well, that's just one project, yeah.
Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you. Could you go back one slide, please?
Sure.
On the very bottom, you mentioned the parks, library, and maintenance. Can you just highlight why you put that?
Yeah. Parks Department obviously has to deal with a lot of homelessness issues. There's maintenance issues that come with it. People sometimes will try to access electrical outlets and tear those up. Those have to be replaced, cleaned up, sometimes occurs on parks. And so there's a lot of resources that are hacked, just around the whole issue of homelessness that can be quite overwhelming sometimes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you. Have we been able to quantify that? Because I know that, you know, that's the cost side, even when you are not doing, you know, spending money. But that's an additional cost? Have we been able?
No, we haven't, we haven't quantified the dollars and cents. But yeah, I'm sure it's significant, particularly when talking about police and fire intervention.
Right, right.
Mayor?
Commissioner James?
Can we get a copy of this PowerPoint?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Soon as I'm done. So that leads to the Homeless Task Force. Again, there were 16 organizations that represented, and that also included residents and business owners, a very enthusiastic group, and they did a great job, and I'm glad I was able to be a part of that. We had four meetings that were held in April and May. The issue, as the mayor mentioned, was to identify where the current resources that are there, try to identify some gaps, and then where could the city assist in filling some of the gaps? And then propose three to four short and long-term solutions. Really a focus on those two ZIP codes, whereas we see the largest numbers. And then, of course, present it to the City Commission for your consideration. So the three areas that we focused on were housing and shelter, mental health or substance abuse, behavioral health, as we call it, and then safety and security issues. And we had folks break out into teams representing those three areas. So some of the recommendations that came out that we'll be looking at in the next few months to figure out how to implement. One was the living room concept, and this is really a kind of a drop-in center. One of the issues that we have with, there's a nuisance type of, I guess, issue when it comes to homelessness. So whether it's the person with the open container or the person who's exposed themselves because they have to use the bathroom, there's all kinds of little, these nuisance issues that occur around homelessness. And sometimes they may be misdemeanor offenses where they can be arrested, and sometimes they're not. Sometimes they have been deemed as being something that is legal. But when there is a potential misdemeanor offense that's viewed, observed by an officer, one of the things we looked at is how do we redirect that person from an arrest situation into a more positive outcome? Because when you're arresting these folks, they're sometimes, as the officers will say, they may get back to downtown before the officer does because there's just no room in the jails to be holding folks for any extended period of time for misdemeanor violations. So how do we redirect to a more positive outcome? And one of the things that we're looking at is this kind of drop-in center concept where the individual, if they are potentially going to be arrested for a misdemeanor, you know, nonviolent type of situation, they could, they could be deferred to this drop-in center where they would be engaged for services. There are some similar concepts around the country, and myself and Chief Mooney are going to be going to Louisville, Kentucky on Friday to visit a similar concept in Louisville, Kentucky, and find out whether it's working there, and, and what the costs are, and see if we can replicate it in some ways here. Maybe we start small and see how it goes, but certainly something I think the police would, would like to see and appreciate because of the number of calls that they get on some of these nuisance issues that are really not solved by a temporary arrest. And frankly, these misdemeanors, they have to be viewed by the police officer in order to be something they can arrest for. And a lot of times, they're not going to see what the citizen's reporting, they're not going to be there at the time that it happens. So this gives us another option, potentially.
So, it would seem that this would have some similarities to St. Anne's Place, because...
St. Anne's is mostly providing more of that support through food or...
But they can drop in there.
They could drop in there, whereas the, I think the, and we'll see when we go to Louisville, but I think it's, it's a lot more engagement.
Okay.
Yeah.
But maybe it's...
Maybe a way.
Maybe you build on...
Potentially. And well, and speaking of that, the other thing we could build on potentially is the Lord's Place has an engagement center that we can potentially build on that. The issue is expanding the hours and having adequate resources to have enough staffing there, because you really want to have at least some evening hours, otherwise it's really not effective. That's where most of the issues happen, so.
Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you. So the Kentucky, Louisville, Kentucky project, is that along this concept of a drop-in center?
Yes, and they call it the living room. They tried to brand it.
They call it the living, okay, great.
Community psychiatrist, this is a, we talked a lot about this, because there's always trying to refer people to homeless people to services is a challenge. I mean, especially if they've been on the streets for a long time, getting them to go to an institutional environment is likely not going to happen, and having an appointment, I mean, that's just not realistic. So trying to meet folks where they are, and that's what part of the, that's what the outreach team does, meet them where they're at, engage them there, and so trying to figure out a way to get a, get those mental health services to them. And we are doing it to some impact right now with, with our outreach team, because we do have somebody from Jerome Golden that goes out with them, but it's not a psychiatrist, they can't, they can't administer prescription drugs and try to stabilize them with medication. And that's what we really want to try to head towards. It's an expensive...
So even, it might not even be a psychiatrist, but, you know, a doctor?
Well, or there's a, that's a nurse practitioner.
Somebody who can write prescriptions.
Which, yeah, there's still, the problem is, and there was actually an article I was reading yesterday, I think it was in the Palm Beach Post, about the availability of these services. It's just hard to get, there's not enough people doing these types of services nationwide. And so getting somebody to not only be a psychiatrist or a nurse-practitioner psychiatrist, but also be on the streets is a bit of a stretch, maybe, in the current, in the current environment. But it's something we should, we should look at and see if there's a possibility, even just for a few hours, just kind of a rough estimate, if we were able to get somebody for five hours a week, depending on whether they're a licensed doctor or a nurse practitioner, would be $75,000 to $90,000 a year for about five hours a week. So it's not cheap, but it really could help stabilize. Miami's done some of this and has been, gotten some success with people who have been on the streets for a very long time, being able to provide them their medications on the streets, and they become stabilized and become whole-new persons. Did you have a question, Commissioner?
I was just going to ask if at the end you could go through and tell everyone a little bit about what the Jerome Golden Center does, what Goodwill does, and the Lord's Place. I mean, we hear a lot about them, but I'm not sure everybody really knows that they're in the community and what they're doing already.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of providers, and thankfully they were mostly represented at the task force. Jerome Center, Behavioral Health Center is, I think, the largest mental health provider in the county, so they provide mental health, substance abuse services as well. Lord's Place is one of our prime providers when it comes to providing homelessness service and reentry services as well for those who are exiting the justice system. Gulfstream Goodwill mostly serves the developmentally disabled, a lot of them are homeless or potential for being homeless. I mean, you have somebody who's developmentally disabled, for example, whose parents are now elderly or pass away, who takes care of those folks? If nobody takes care of them, they generally end up on the streets. So Gulfstream provides, not only that, they provide jobs and employment opportunities, as does the Lord's Place. And I already mentioned the Lewis Center and all the stuff they do. Adopt a Family works with families that are homeless. Beatova with the, with the youth population, with a particular emphasis on LGBT.
Go on to your recommendations.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of folks doing a lot of things. This was kind of unanimous when we, and our group is expanding the peer outreach team coverage.
I think we absolutely have to do that.
There's been some success with that, and so we'd like to have some evening hours and some weekend hours, which we don't have right now.
How much time a week do we have now that people are going out?
We have two and a half full-time staff, so I think they're doing about, what, 20 hours a week or so between those, those two and a half staff, so we'd like to expand another 20.
I saw that Rafael Clemente is here, and of course, he's got the clean team that's also supplementing the outreach as well.
Yep, absolutely. So we'd like to, we'd like to expand the outreach effort and also have an easy way for the public or the, or law enforcement to get in touch with them. So that means a centralized number where you can call and get that person out there fairly quickly. So it could be on-call or a mixture of on-call and being on the streets. The approximate cost would be about $50,000 to $75,000 in addition to the current $100,000 that we have. Some of that could be federal CDBG funds, but we're going to have to, we want to do this, we're going to put some general revenue.
What's the future of CDBG?
That's always a question mark. We're doing okay for this coming year, but I suspect the following year we'll see some cuts.
Yeah.
And this is, I'm sorry, this is under safety and security. Better coordination is a big one, I think. There was, we had the state attorney's office participated in this endeavor, as did the police department and the, the, excuse me, the public defender's office as well. And so there was a lot of talk about really concentrating on some of the homeless that are not just a nuisance, but are really problematic, a criminal element, and identifying those and being able to make sure that those folks get prosecuted as much as possible to the extent that the law allows. And so I know that our, our city attorney's office, along with myself, PD, are working on making sure that that happens as much as possible, that we, we get the folks who need to be off the streets, off the streets because they're a danger to the, to society.
Commissioner Lambert, did you have a question? I saw your hand up before. No? Okay.
I already mentioned the Fuse Initiative, that's the 25 folks that we're identifying. Also, reentry housing stabilization pilot, I'm going to propose with our, some of our HUD funding, that we use some funds to help house some of those who are coming out of the jail system, who are resident, who are going to be residents of West Palm Beach either one way or the other, either on the streets or somewhere else. So I'll be coming to you with that shortly. So housing and shelter, some of the recommendations was to increase supportive housing through waiting lift preferences and project-based vouchers with local housing authorities, or several housing authorities throughout the county. It's a bit of a challenge for them because they, they rely in some ways on the rents that are paid by the tenants. Tenants have to pay 30% of their income for rent. If somebody has zero income, that's zero revenue to help support their operations. And so we've got to kind of work with the housing authorities on figuring out ways that they can provide some preferences, and maybe it's for those who are getting disability incomes. A lot of the homeless, believe it or not, do get disability income, but it's a small amount, $600 a month typically, or $620. It's not enough to pay rent, but at least it's some income that maybe the housing authorities could, could utilize. Request staff review of current land use and zoning requirements to allow for greater flexibility when we're developing affordable housing. And that's an opportunity to have more buy-right development, and that's going to reduce some of that backlash that you may get, like we saw in Dr. Alice Moore Apartments, where you get a lot of pushback on a project that really kind of meets all the requirements, and they may have a small variance that they're recommending, but because they have to go to, they have to go to a planning board for those variances, it causes an opportunity to have that "not in my backyard" kind of mentality. So that's something we can have development services potentially look at, at least, is is there a way to provide some greater flexibilities for certain projects? Maximize the leverage of housing and funding through collaborative efforts. I mean, there's a lot of private sector money that we're not tapping into, and, you know, as a city employee, I can't be going out there and raising private sector money, but there probably is a way that we could do a better job at trying to find private sector money to fill some of the gaps that may be happening in some of the programs or some of the, the projects that we may have. I mentioned it took four funding sources, most of them were, were public dollars to do those six units. Maybe we can go to the, somehow we can get to the private sector and have them donate, and $100,000 would have made a huge difference for that project, as an example, and it's not a lot of money to raise in the private sector. And then more overnight beds, either through Lewis Center or other sources. I've been working with the county to try to expand the number of beds there. There's some challenges with the, with the space and maintenance of those beds, but hopefully we can overcome and add a few beds there, that I think it's important to not only increase the number of beds, but increase the flexibility of how those beds are used. Right now, it's kind of, has to be 60 used for, between one and three months, and the other six are used for short term. I would rather just see them use it for what they need to use it at that moment. So we're hoping to get that through the county in the next couple of months.
Commissioner Shoff?
Thank you, Mayor. On this slide, the thing that I, I wanted to look at was the "not in my backyard," because I know this, this tends to come from the North End a lot, to Commissioner Neary's point. And I think when we're looking at, at solutions to this problem, what I'd like to see us do is make sure that we're just not looking "all in my backyard." I think we're good concentrating our efforts and making sure that we're coordinating to meet people where they are, but making sure that we are, are not concentrating our projects in just one area so that we end up creating the affordable housing area. I think by taking and mixing our uses of housing, it really helps to create stable communities the whole way around. So, and some of our efforts, I think two of the words I hear are coordination and concentration, and I think those are really significant, but really important on how we're defining what we're doing.
Absolutely, and we want residents, whether they're living in affordable housing or non-affordable housing, to have access to a lot of the same amenities other folks have, because that's part of being integrated into society. If we concentrate poverty in one area, it's, it's not helping anybody. It's not helping the neighborhood, it's not helping those individuals. And so the challenge sometimes is, is a market challenge in that the available land and the cost of land tends to be less expensive, so that's where some of the concentration happens. But we can do a better job at that, for sure. We can find some land in other parts of the city where we can develop some projects. And we're trying to do as much as possible mixed income and not projects that are just affordable.
Sure, I know we tend to have a lot of city-owned property in the North End, and perhaps a solution to that would be to sell some of that property for homeownership and use, and use the funds of that to, to fund projects, et cetera.
Which we are doing. Actually, we've, we've raised a significant amount of money in our trust fund doing just that. Absolutely. So some of the other things that, that I, well, this is housing and shelter still? Okay, sorry. All right, so we got past that.
Yeah, I think, you know, if you go back to the last one, to me, is more overnight beds is just critical.
Yeah, yeah, no doubt, you know. It'll be between some expansion of Lewis Center and hopefully a new homeless resource center in the South End, because we, everybody who's homeless in the county ends up in West Palm.
There were supposed to be two more homeless resource centers, and if you look at the county's 10-year plan, there were supposed to by now have been two additional homeless resource centers.
Yeah, I know they've identified a location for, for a second one, hopefully that goes through.
Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you. To that point, for 10 years, the county started the 10-year homeless plan, and what we don't have today has not been a function of not trying to get done, but to Commissioner Shoff's point, it becomes very difficult to put these facilities in any part of the city. It took years to...
Any part of the county, really.
In the county, really, and that becomes the real challenge, and so whether or not you put together big centers, or whether you're putting smaller, you know, opportunities within various parts of the community so it doesn't overwhelm the neighborhood, and then that, because things just don't happen because of...
Yeah, I really like sort of that more scattered approach, because it doesn't, number one, it doesn't concentrate poverty, and it doesn't concentrate, you don't have that issue necessarily with the neighborhood, but the challenge is providing the services to scattered sites.
Guys, I, I worked in the disability field for years and years and years, and, you know, there was whole push for group homes and "not in my backyard," but the best thing we found out is smaller group living situations in different places, and that's the way we'll best serve this community. Warehousing them into big structures, it's not the best idea.
Most of the assistance has been through those scattered sites. I think the duplexes are a good example of that. Sometimes we have supportive housing, you may have to have a little larger project because of the, the support services needed onsite, but, yeah, generally speaking, absolutely, it works much better that way, and that's what we'd like to do. A couple of other things, very quickly.
You already went through those.
Went through this, I'm sorry. Keep going back to that slide. We are working on a, in a marketing campaign on panhandling. I recorded my part already, and I don't know, Chief, did you record yours? Chief recorded hers. So we're going to get that out hopefully soon on our local TV station, and also working on print, social media, so folks understand it's not okay to give to panhandlers, but also just in general about the homelessness issue, and so folks a little more educated about what the city's doing as well.
Well, and, and I think that there's also, I think the Lord's Place is also going to do a whole education kind of thing with the downtown...
Yes.
...community, the merchants and, and the people who live here. And I think the more people know about this, the better.
Yeah, absolutely, and I just recently met with the downtown homeowners, or Resident Association as well. Homelessness to Work programs, the mayor mentioned the Downtown Development Authority has a program through the Lord's Place with the clean team. I met, I'm not going to jinx it, so I'm just going to say I met with somebody last week that potentially will open up some doors in terms of providing work opportunities for those who are formerly homeless.
That's good, you know, and if, when people are trying to remind me that we need to do more about the homeless, I often see the homeless-to-work program that one of the cities of the Southwest is doing. So I would, I would like to have more data on that, because, you know, giving a person a job is not the same as giving a person a home.
Right.
So how many of those people who are working are living in a home? And how does that work? And, yeah.
We can get that. I'm sure Diana can rustle that data up.
Yeah.
This, next one...
They have to live in a house, they have to, they can, they have to be not homeless? No?
Not particular programs.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
This next one, we're going to have to work with our city attorney's office and some other folks to try to look at, but basically looking at the, the current legislation for the Baker Act, and then the Marchman Act, which is a little-used provision that allows for temporary detention for those who have addictions, and actually Lisa Kemp has been working with one of those particular cases, has been to court like, what, three times now? Three times to court, and has had some success. So we're going to talk to our city attorney's office about that effort and see if there's ways that the legislation can be changed. A lot of talk nationally and statewide about red flags. How do you identify red flags? Whether that's a kid in school who has red flags, or somebody on the street who homeless. Right now, there's not a good way legally to temporarily detain somebody unless they're a danger to themselves or others. Maybe we can look at legislation that would loosen that up a little bit and allow for some temporary detention for treatment opportunities. And then the big one, we have a lot of folks doing a lot of great things, but it's not always leveraged and collaborated in the best way. And so that's something that I hope this task force and other task forces that are occurring throughout the city can kind of come together and better leverage our existing resources, because we have funds going in a lot of different places and a lot of different slices of the pie, and we need to put those together a little better.
Thank you. Commissioner Shoff, you had a question?
I did. Two questions, actually, if I may. On the clean and green team, I've had some questions from residents as to whether or not it coordinates with a reentry program, so folks that are going through reentry may have the opportunity to work for the clean and green team as a way to avoid a homelessness situation?
Well, it depends on what clean and green team you're talking about. We have three of them. So there's one downtown that's through the Lord's Center. There's one in the Northwest that's through NCCI, and there's one in Coleman Park, Pleasant City, Northwood, through the Urban League. So...
So maybe?
Maybe. I'll find out, for sure.
Okay. My second question goes to your last statement about coordinated efforts, and I think this is a prime example of what a great coordinated effort can produce. When we're looking at addressing our issues, I think probably some of the challenges faced by the groups in this room is that you don't know what you don't know, so you don't know if you have someone who's coming into the Lord's Place and then the next day going into another program. Is there some way that, that we can start to look at perhaps a registration system like an ID card, or something that, that helps identify folks without being too intrusive? I know going into...
We can't have, we can't have you speak from the audience. We are working on a community ID, which will be administered by the legal aid, and it will be available to anyone.
Okay, so this would be a way that perhaps organizations within this room would be able to tell who's getting services and where, to try to coordinate those efforts.
Yeah, actually, that actually does exist now. There is a, there is a system, HMIS, a client-track system, that when folks access any of the homeless providers, including Victor's House, that information is entered, so we're not duplicating services.
Okay.
Now, there is, you know, there needs to be a better job with that, like there's certain organizations that don't use it as much as they probably should, so we need So we need to do a better job, but there is, that system does exist and we're actually looking at tying it into a couple of other systems in the future, including ones that serve HIV-positive clients so that we're making sure a lot of these folks are getting a lot of services and they jump from service to service. And we want to make sure that they're not duplicate.
If we could try to use that as a way to regulate our services too, because I know we have a lot of church groups, et cetera, that feed in the parks and that create some other issues surrounding that for the neighborhoods.
Actually, James Green, who's kind of my counterpart in the county, and he's not here today, but he is looking at working with the faith-based organizations on that very issue and having them get access to that system. So when they're doing that, they're hopefully putting these folks in and we can see where they're getting breakfast, lunch, and dinner.
Commissioner Lambert?
I remembered my question. Is the Lewis Center the first stop or the first place? Like, Mayor, you were asking, you know, when you get a call from someone, is there one place where we can say, here's at least where you can call to find out which resource to go to?
Yes, and I know, again, the county's working on a central phone number that they're going to be utilizing. Is that, is that done yet, Georgiana? Okay. So they're working on a central number that anybody could call to get that person begin that process?
That would be really good, yeah. That would be excellent. Okay, any more questions? Commissioner Ryan, this is the last question.
Thank you. What I just wanted to point out is that the emphasis has been all over the downtown and the North End, but what we're seeing in the South End during the nighttime because they're not getting as much attention, they don't want the attention that they're getting in the daytime, is the impact all along the waterfront. And if you go down there, there, all of the homes are for sale and then you talk to the owners, that's because of this activity. So I only mention that because it's another opportunity to try to engage people in funding resources that address this problem because they're personally impacted as well as just, not just people in the downtown.
Yeah, there is, there is some activity in the South End and we've had to go down there a few times, but yes, that's a good point.
Okay. Well, Mr. Fanna, thank you so much.
Thank you.
This was excellent. I want to thank the committee members for their work. Next steps is I suspect you'll be bringing budgetary requests to us
Yes.
on these items.
Absolutely, thank you.
And, you know, I think we really want to continue to move forward with many of the things that you've brought to us today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for who served on the committee. Okay, we're now going to go on to item number two, an update on education initiatives. And before we start, I want to do a little introductory comment while we shift people. Thank you so much. Thanks, guys. Okay, the commission asked that we put this on the agenda today. And I just want to give you a little history about how we got to where we are and Chris will talk to you about where we are. But about four years ago, there was a push to look at a city-sponsored charter school. And we did look at that and we got a lot of feedback from our constituents saying, stay out of the charter school business city. We're really not something we think you should be involved in. And let's work with the public schools and see what we could do to make the public schools better. So we went to the school district and talked with the folks, the superintendent and Keith Oswald as well, about what we could do. And we, at that point, we formed something called Partnership Schools and entered into a memorandum of understanding with the school district that we wanted to focus on the lowest-performing school in our city. We looked, we had seen all of the FCAT data, FCAT at the time, all the testing data that showed us that Northmore Elementary was the lowest-performing school in our city. And we decided to focus all of our resources on Northmore. Now, a lot of other cities, you know, they raise money, they give $5,000 here, they give $10,000 here. We wanted a focused and controlled effort, particularly on improving literacy in a particular school. As a result, Chris became involved and then we also hired Eileen Silver as our consultant. And we've been working with Vonda Daniel, who's here as well, the principal of Northmore Elementary for three years now, Chris? For three years. And they'll tell you about what a great difference it's made. Okay, Chris, go.
Great, thanks, Mayor. Commissioners, Chris Ruge, Director of Economic Development for the city of West Palm Beach and also the designated staff person helping with this initiative, which when we said, I said I put education initiatives to match the agenda that you have before you today. But as the mayor outlined, I mean, it is really our efforts at one school primarily, which is Northmore Elementary. So just going to go a quick oversight. I mean, the mayor summarized a lot of what I'm going to talk about in the first couple of slides. When we get into programs and partnerships, I'm actually going to ask Eileen to come up. She's been doing just a tremendous amount of work and is a great asset to our efforts and really knows each partnership and each program that's being implemented by that partner inside and out. She'll segue into the fourth year. And then lastly, we'll have Vonda come up and talk a little bit more about some of the technical reading results and things like that of what we have planned, just summarize what we've been doing and take any questions that you may have. Throughout, throughout the presentation, I put a couple of fun photos in there. This one was taken from Law Day where we actually had a judge come in.
Judge Parriante.
Yes, or Justice, I'm sorry. Actually, come in and work with the kids on some law curriculum. But I know personally, I've been volunteering for the Let's Read program and have seen a lot of these programs firsthand as well, reading to the kids and seeing how the teachers have adopted a lot of these best practices based on the partnerships that have been brought in. And, I mean, we are just doing great work up in Northmore and it's just incredibly rewarding when you see just how far the kids are progressing. Just quick summary, this is where Northmore's located, north end of the city. And I believe I did, just for reference, Raibovich is to the east of the campus. To the south, Pleasant City and Roosevelt Elementary are to the south of Northmore Elementary. So each blue number, if you can see it, is a student area code where those students are designated to go to that school according to how the school district has outlined the boundaries for Northmore Elementary. Student enrollment, as of the last numbers that I could pull, is about 545, Vonda. So that was of February this year. It dropped by three students based on the numbers that were reported in October. And obviously, Principal Daniels has been, is in charge of the school and is doing a great job. Forty-four percent are non-English-speaking students. And we have seen increases in the achievement levels of the students. When we started this program, as the mayor mentioned, it was the lowest performing, but now is no longer the case. So our efforts combined with the partnerships and the efforts of the school district are showing and the great work that Vonda's been doing has shown some fruits. Eileen's been helping us on an annual basis and will continue to do so. The MOU that we have in place with the school district is for five years and we designed that purposefully so that, you know, it would go through the mayor's term and then there would be one term for the following administration that comes in next spring. So the memorandum of understanding has three main goals. Those goals are very specific to the school improvement plan that is filed with the state. And under those goals, there are some specific targets that we've geared those partnerships towards. So each of these, each of these implementation categories, there's a partnership that's affecting those. And all of those bubble up at some way, you know, some form or function apply to the goals for the school improvement plan. And this is what the school district's doing, this is what we're doing, and it's filed with the state. So we're all operating under the same set of goals and plans. So we're all making sure that we're coordinated. This picture is the Carson Reading Room. It was funded by the Carson Foundation that Eileen helped facilitate. And they came into the media center and they put in all these great, all these great characteristics and books and things like that. And it's just, it's been a great addition to Northmore Elementary. So all of these partnerships, as you can see, there's quite a few. I mean, we could spend probably a good hour or so talking about all of the programs and partnerships that we have put into the school so far. But what we did is we highlighted about five to give you an idea of the type of programs and partnerships that are together. So I'll have Eileen come up now and we'll just go over the ones that are highlighted and give you a little bit of a better idea. If you have any other questions about any of these partnerships, we're happy to answer some questions.
I think one of the coolest things about this initiative is that we've been able to engage so many not-for-profit partners in this work that have just been really excited to be a part of it. One of the first things we did was to start a preschool program. So you have two classes now? Two preschool classes? They did not have a preschool program before. Okay, Eileen. Eileen is, has been working on this project from the beginning. I think it's a labor of love. And she had a huge birthday celebration there at the school.
We won't tell you which one. Anyway, as Chris alluded to, I think one of the beauties of this initiative is the fact that we're trying to work on the same page. You know, the school district and the city and the school. So we're trying to work to coordinate with the school improvement plan, as he said. It's very important that we don't go off on our own and set up new goals and new objectives so that we're all, the whole point is that we're integrating some of these results. So as Chris said, we're just going to highlight a few, I think, really exciting things. And by the way, these partnerships, when they began, are still continuing. So it wasn't, it wasn't a one-time shot. We've started and they're continuing. One of the really most influential ones has been with the Pew Charitable Trust, which we have brought in what they call the Balanced Literacy Program and also funds the summer slide. And that initiative goes from K through second grade. I think the other important element of some of these partnerships and what is really important is teacher capacity building. So a lot of these partnerships are really also including professional development for teachers because we know that the work that's being done has to be done in the classroom. So the teachers and the work that they do is the critical part of influencing kids and outcomes. So this particular partnership continues and one of the things that the school has to do is continually do a progress report to Pew to ensure that this initiative continues. And there was one that was just done to show that these kids are improving in terms of literacy. The other was a quick partnership, but one of the things that Comcast did at the beginning is we brought in about 75 computers for families to be able to use in their home and they had training on them. Because again, in this population of students, many of the kids and the families don't have access to technology. And that's something that I think we have to do better and improve and expand is the technology in the homes.
So not only did they give the computers, but they also gave a year's worth of access to broadband.
Yes, yes, they did. The other really great partnership is through the Center for Creative Education that we brought in. And that's Arts Integration Program. We began that in the after-school initiative, but decided that through that program that we could do more and that they could do more. So now that program has advanced to working with K through second grade teachers. And basically, it's an integration of academics and arts. And the people that come in through the Center of Creative Education work with the teachers on the curriculum to enhance it using arts. And as most of you should know, that a lot of kids, they do not learn in traditional ways. So we have to think of more creative ways for them to learn and arts is a wonderful venue for these kids to improve their skills. The other really exciting initiative too is through the Institute for Early Childhood through Palm Beach State College. And this program that's primarily funded by PNC Bank is bringing the STEAM program to the early childhood classes that the mayor alluded to. And this is an intensive program, working with these kids and professional development for the teachers to include, you know, the science, the technology, the math, and the arts integrated with these kids. And that program hopefully will advance to, you know, the first grade as well and move to the second grade. One of the things, and I think you said it, Chris, that the city is really focused on is really pre-K through second grade, by the way. That's what we've been trying to focus on. And then the last one that I'm going to highlight is a new partnership through Palm Healthcare Foundation. One of the things that we did this year is we piloted a program on mindfulness. There's a lot of research now about how mindfulness really impacts a lot of things, but in this case, in fact, impacts school improvement. And in our case, literacy. So as a result of that pilot, through Palm Healthcare Foundation and the Breakers wrote a grant that we're going to implement next year, which will focus on two grade levels and do more of an intensive all-year initiative on mindfulness. And FAU, who is implementing this program through their brain research institute down at FAU, Palm Healthcare, by the way, is doing some tremendous work in brain health and that's how this all came about. So one of the things that we're going to do is they're going to use this project as a research project. So in the end, we're really going to know these kids that have been involved in this, if indeed they do make improvement in terms of academics.
Yeah, the other one I would highlight and thank is our library. They train folks to go in to read to the kids. That's what Chris, Chris does.
Me too.
And Eileen. And it brings a great resource to the school of trained people to.
Well, the library, right, I didn't mean to omit the library, but the library has done tremendous work with the, I figured you probably knew more about what the library was doing.
Yeah.
The library is doing tremendous research, not only through the Let's Read program, but the library also helped the media center at Northmore really design it and talk about how it should be designed for children's books. And we've also, through Bridges, have brought the adults over to the media, to the library to really help train them in terms of how to work with their students and what resources that our library has, which are tremendous resources for our community that some people don't know about in terms of introducing them to those resources. So thank you for that. In terms of the fourth year, which we're working on now, some of the things that we're excited about is Northmore is really working. We're sort of changing the flavor of the school. And they're moving towards an inquiry-based method. And the model, one of the models for that at this point is the Conservatory School, which we made a lot of visits to. And now the school district has, I think, bought into this and they've identified three schools, I think that's correct, three schools in Palm Beach County that they are targeting to move to this method. And it's a teacher capacity building and it's really changing the way that teachers are working with the students. And it potentially will have phenomenal results at the school. And as part of that, I think there's going to be construction and building and eventually, hopefully, the school is going to go through pre-K through eighth grade, I believe, eventually. We hope, that's one of the goals. The other initiative that actually started is the Home Language Program, which will eventually turn into a dual, a dual-language school. As you see, there's about 44% of the population there that's non-English. I think this has doubled, if I believe, since we started in 2015. And by the way, that in itself is a challenge for the school in terms of literacy and academic progress. I think I mentioned the STEAM implementation that will continue and expand this year. This past year, the teachers went through all the professional development. Next year, it'll actually start in the classrooms. And then the mindfulness initiative, which I mentioned, will start full steam with FAU in the fall. And the other fun thing that we did, we worked on this year was trying to develop a little bit of an attendance campaign, trying to really bring, you know, parents into the fold and making sure that kids are in, not only in school, but in school on time. Because a lot of kids are late for school. And one of the things that we did at Northmore is we partnered with the art students in the fifth grade there. And they actually designed the logo and they designed the tagline, which will now be on all of the school-based information that gets sent out. And we'll start more of a campaign in the community next year. And the other initiative that's come up that we're looking into at this point is through Healthy Aquatics, through the Marine Institute, where they have now integrated their curriculum into all of the school district's information. And we're hoping to look at that, to expand that at Northmore in terms of the academics, the arts, and things like that. And that will focus on science and the environment. So we're looking at that for next year. And there will be more, you know, where we meet with Vonda during the summer to look at the school improvement plan and plan our initiatives based on the school, so.
Just a couple of noteworthy items. On the attendance campaign, that was a big push by the school district, sort of countywide. So that's really, even though we are doing it at Northmore, I mean, that's actually a big thing that I think is a priority for the district overall.
When we first started looking at Northmore three, four years ago, 25% of the kids had missed more than a month. had missed more than a month of school.
Right.
And we know that that has a direct reflection on how well they do as well academically. And then the other fun fact, I did put tentative because obviously, some of the details, that the Healthy Aquatics Marine Institute is still being ironed out, but they are also one of the applicants for the 12 for 12 project, where we have the pods and small businesses on Clumash Street. So that's kind of cool that they're, we're blending initiatives here and pretty optimistic about that.
And the other thing I would add is that Rybavich has been very involved with the school and the neighborhood. The north end of the city has really sort of adopted the school and they've been there on, you know, opening day and other times. So a lot of people volunteer.
Yeah, Rybavich has provided many tutors to come to the school. We actually did, last year, we did a wonderful, they sponsored a luncheon for the teachers that we did at Rybavich to give a report to them about what's going on. And we will continue to work. We have some things in the wing that I don't really want to mention at this point because they're not definite with Rybavich that I think potentially will be very exciting.
Great. Any questions for Eileen? Commissioner Shoff?
Thank you very much. And this is really exciting for me, particularly being in my district. And I think this is really great community engagement. If there was room for further community engagement, as far as reading, the Housing Authority has the Senior Center there, which has a whole population of folks I'm sure that would love to engage in the community. And, you know, some corporate partners that may engage in a corporate read program, something like that, because literacy is so important for these kids in their formative years. So thank you for that. And if I can give any assistance.
Absolutely. You will get a call from me.
Great.
Very quickly. Vanda, I think you will now come up.
Yeah, Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I don't know if I missed it in the beginning. Thank you for the presentation, Eileen, I appreciate it. Did we say how much the investment is over the five years?
Well, we have, we put in the budget about $50,000 for educational initiatives. And so that's our commitment.
Annually or?
Annually, yes.
And so we don't know, we can't tell you about the not-for-profits.
Sure.
We also got money from HCD for our after-school program, I think, right? Computers, didn't we get money from HCD?
Yes, Armando just reminded me that HCD put in about $10,000 for the iPads.
Yeah.
Twenty iPads that went into.
And the other not-for-profits, we don't know, like Pinnacle Kids is pretty involved and of course, the Carson Reading Room, you know.
And that's Eileen's main role is to help coordinate those, as I know it takes a lot to coordinate all of those at the table.
To build them, to go out to them, to meet with them.
Eileen, speak into the mic.
Yes, I think that, is this on?
Yeah, you're okay.
The whole idea, I think, of my role is about collaboration. So really identifying those organizations that we feel can add value based on the goals that we want. So it's really that coordination that I've been providing and getting them to participate in this.
That's what I wanted to speak to because that has been an absolutely wonderful support level, so.
First of all, Vanda, before you start.
Okay.
She's a rock star. She, she, this is your fourth year, starting your fourth year?
Starting my fifth year, yes.
And Northmore has done an amazing job and been so welcoming and, you know, excited about everything that we're doing and that she's doing. So thank you for being here.
Thank you.
I think you were supposed to be on vacation, right?
Yes, I am on vacation.
Thank you for coming.
No problem. I couldn't miss this opportunity just to say thank you, first of all, to everyone, the entire panel. Northmore would not be where we are without the community support. And it has just been absolutely wonderful. As you can see, all of the different opportunities that have been afforded us because of your support and because of the initiative. Eileen has come right beside me and Chris and we would meet. So we've had lots of meetings and as they discuss, everything aligns to our school improvement plan. Everything is aligned to our data, which outlines our strengths and our weaknesses. Where do we need that support? Because that's what the school improvement plan is built on. And so to be able to sit down with someone and say, these are the things that we need. I remember doing my first proposal to Eileen and she looked at it and flipped it over and went, what? But believe me, she has met every one of those benchmarks of the things that we need and the support level that we need at Northmore. And as you can see, each of these initiatives, they have started and continued through this period of time. Just going back to the Pew Foundation, started with one initiative, we now have three initiatives with them. And so to connect to the community and have those resources to say, these are some of the things that we need to add additional support, has been wonderful. So I know that you have questions for me, so I'm here to answer whatever you need.
I was just gonna, I was gonna make a comment that as a former funder, so I was with the education foundation, I know how important it is to have support already at the table to be able to bring more funding to the school. So I appreciate the city's effort in doing that. And it all, I hadn't, you know, Eileen and I have worked together in the past, but I had never seen it set up like this. And what this almost reminds me of is some of our schools in the more affluent areas have their own foundations. And this almost seems like we're providing that service.
It's similar.
And it is so important because there are so many resources and so many foundations that will give to our schools, but they need coordination. And I know that the schools don't have the extra time to give to this. And so I'm excited to see all of this.
Well, when we first started this, the reading proficiency level at third grade was 22%. So what is it now?
39. We have increased to 39% overall, yes.
So we're getting there.
We're getting there. And it seems like, seems though that's a very low number, but when you're growing proficiency in reading, just think about it, you didn't learn to read overnight. It takes time to learn to read. And so putting those programs into place and laying that foundation, we have seen tremendous growth. We have also been able to target a group of students that started in kindergarten and we have been able to track them for the last three years. They're sitting at 79% proficiency. So they started with us from day one and have been with us the entire three years. And so we want to get more of those students into the program and getting them through the program. So those are the initiatives that we're working towards. When I do the 39%, that includes all of our students, all of, we have students that took the test that had only been in our school for just a few days, just like any other school, but they may not speak any English at all. We have 44% of our students that are ESOL and a majority of them came to us not speaking English at all. So they are learning English and as you learn, they're just growing and I'm just looking, we're sitting right there. We looked at our levels when we receive our test results back from FSA. And those of you that are not familiar, we are ranked, the levels are level one to level five, level five being the highest, level three being that midpoint that will be considered on grade level or proficient. We're sitting there with a huge pocket of level twos. When I look at those level twos, those are our ESOL babies that are just learning to read and they're right there. We had like such a large percentage of them that are sitting within five points of being right there on grade level. So each year, we're just getting stronger and stronger and stronger. Yes, 39% is not where we want to be, but we are growing. We started at 21 and now we're at 39. So we continue to grow.
Chris, you just looked, you just looked a number up, I saw you doing that.
Yes.
Well, because the ESOL, so the students that English is their second language, has doubled in the last four years at Northmore from 22 to 44%.
44%, yes.
So I mean.
And still growing.
So I mean, that's, I think that considering that, what, you know, the nature of the school makeup, the headway that we're making is pretty good.
That's interesting, yeah. Yeah, you have twice as many, wow.
But the students are doing well. They're making great progress.
Commissioner Lambert?
Sorry, I have one more question. It sounds like maybe consistency.
Yes.
You were saying is key.
Yes.
You know, you're saying 79% proficiency in reading because those were the kids that stayed in it all three years. Is that what, if you had to pinpoint one main thing that has been most influential or that helps us to really move the needle, is it, is it consistency or is there something else?
I would say, I would say definitely consistency is a large part of that. If anything, I feel that if you're not consistent in constantly changing, things are not going to improve. But consistency is definitely important. To have these programs to educate the students as well as the teachers and provide that consistency, we grow over time. And as I say to my teachers, we, as we stay together, we get stronger. We get stronger because we're growing. And so yes, definitely consistency.
And I think you, you've been hyper-focused on this and have been really leading your team in this direction. I think the teacher capacity building has been a huge part of that.
Yes.
And your continued focus.
Yes.
Makes a big difference.
And if I could just say one thing, I mean, to your question, I mean, obviously, if you have kids that you are keeping in your school consistent, you not only know the kids, but you know where their strengths and weaknesses are. But, you know, traditionally at Northmore, because of the population, you know, kids haven't been that consistent. So that's, you know, they're trying to work towards that to see how do we keep kids in that school. You know, parents move, they leave, there's lots of issues in terms of, in terms of that kind of.
Commissioner James?
Thank you. Talk to us a bit about the pre-K program, how many students have gone through it and what are some of the metrics you're using to gauge the success of that particular?
Currently, we have 40 students, I should say 40 slots. And pretty much, we're full and have a waiting list each and every year. We have, this is our third year that of completion. The very first year, we started with just one class, which was a class of 20. And those are the individuals that we were able to track for the last three years. And I said, like, initially, with those individuals, they started, they did really well. And so our goal has been to, been to keep them at the school. And that's one of the challenges, as Eileen has mentioned, is the transit, they're wanting to transition to other schools or they move to another area in the district. But those students have done quite well and are more stable than maybe those that came in a little later. Some of the programs that we have started in the pre-K program, as I stated, Pew has come in and is working through the district with a literacy program that they are implementing with pre-K. We are considered one of the model sites that they're using to teach this throughout the entire district. With the STEM initiative, we're doing STEM and STEAM through pre-K. So that is definitely something that is very important. Our entire school with the primary, we're starting project-based learning, which is inquiry-based learning, which is focusing a lot more on higher-order thinking, hands-on approach, doing more projects. And I'm pretty sure you're familiar with some of the other schools that do some of these programs. But the kids have been just so excited through CCE. CCE has come in and supported that initiative. And we were able to do a whole showcase just recently with our kindergarten first and second grade students. And I wish I could pull up the video and show you the kids presenting in kindergarten about their community, where they were able to, they made an entire model, and they called it Northmore, of course, but they made an entire model of the community and are able to articulate to you each and every part of the community and the community helpers and why they're important. So they are able to take that and make it real world and apply it. So those initiatives have been outstanding and the results that we're getting out of our pre-K program are outstanding.
Well, I think the future plans are exciting. You know, if you're looking at more inquiry-based learning, if you're looking at K, which would be wonderful.
Yes.
You know, and doing some, being able to do some more innovative things would be awesome.
Yes.
Any other questions? Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you. One of the things, the byproducts of the success of the school is the stabilization of the neighborhood. So as you talk about these kids that are transition children because you have a high incidence of rental in the community. And as you stabilize the community, the school, the people tend to stay in the neighborhood, which tends to stabilize the community. And I, so I know, I'm not sure if you have any numbers on that, but I'm sure it's an amazing impact as well.
Chris?
Commissioner, I don't have any numbers specifically that come to mind, but one thing that we are going to be piloting this year is a teacher housing program, working with Armando and some of the houses that we have up in the north end, where maybe we can put some of the teachers that are teaching at Northmore into those houses to, again, to your point about neighborhood stabilization would just be tremendous.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you so much for coming, really appreciate it. Eileen, thanks for the great work you do. Chris, as always, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Okay, we're now going on to item number three, Sunset Lounge and Related Projects. CRA staff.
Is that yours? Thanks, Senator.
Good morning. John Ward, I'm your CRA director, and I'm joined today by a number of particularly important individuals. I think we're having the AIA conference for the county here today. I've got half of, half the architects in town. Alfonso Hernandez is with us today. He's our architect on the Sticks Alley project, which we'll be discussing in a second. And of course, behind us over here, Rick Gonzalez, Darren Engel with REG, which is our Sunset lead architects. Who else is with us? The Cooper Construction Company representatives Veronica and Jackie are here with us today. Hold your hands up, please. There are, there are contractors on the project. Joelle Flowers is with us with Design to Form, which is doing our part too. So today, we're going to talk about primarily the.
And do you have new staff that you would like to introduce?
Yes, ma'am, I do have new staff that I'd like to introduce also. Today's the first day for Sarah Blake, who's our new project manager in the north end. So welcome, Sarah.
So she'll be doing Northwood and.
She will. We're not focused so much on the geography, but specific projects, but she'll, she'll engage with the, with the Northwood Village immediately. So we'll get started on that right away. So.
Welcome.
And other staff are with us today. Obviously, Gina is our project manager on these projects, which we're talking about. And I've got everybody with us today. Alicia Nguyen is with us. Allison Justice, my senior project manager. So anyway, let's get started. For the benefit of the commissioners that weren't here when we acquired the property, this is, this is where it all began. In the early 1920s, around 1926, they started building projects over there. And this is, this is where the sunset started. Obviously downstairs, a garage and upstairs, a roof garden. And in fact, it says roof garden on the, on the sign there. You entered by that circular door or round top door there, went up a staircase and enjoyed the evening. And you can see, I want you to look at, as we're going through these slides, the deliberate progress of this project because they always knew from the gun that they were going to build something much more significant. And you can see from the design of the building how they poured those precast columns already. And as they, as they moved to the second floor, they're filling in with concrete blocks and going on. So I have an idea that the sunset kind of grew as they acquired material more than anything else. A lot of times, there were projects that were torn down in Palm Beach, for instance, and they went and acquired some things. And I think you're going to see some elements of that as we move forward. But this is where it all started. In 1942, 13, about 15 years later, this is where they had gotten to. And I want you to note in particular, the round-top windows in the front of the building and that whole set of doors in the center there, and they have that little balcony there. So as I said, this has nothing to do with the architecture of the building as it started out. It's just kind of coming together as parts and pieces, I think, became available to them. I love the barrel-top roof that they put on it instead of a flat-top commercial building that you typically see in a lot of these areas. But this is where we've gotten to in 1942. And inside that barrel-top roof on the second floor of this building was a literally two-story ballroom with a mezzanine around the outside. This is Lionel Hampton on Vibes in his orchestra. Place was packed. This happened on a regular basis, drew a fabulous crowd, and they're, they're having a great time. time. This is what we're coming back to. And I brought this with you. As we're going into the building now, we're in the process now of selective demolition, and we're looking in the building and we're finding things. And some of the things we're finding are old paper records that they literally had in a back storage room that hadn't seen the light of day in probably 50 years. This is a telegram from 1935, and it's from a booking agent in New York City. And the telegram reads, it's to William Mitchell, who was the manager of the club at the time, and it says, "That much belated tour with Erskine Hawkins and the original Bama State Collegians, direct from the Ubangi Club, approaches reality." The Ubangi Club was in New York. Stop. "Boys will be in Florida middle of December." Stop. "We'll advise in a few days the exact date." Stop. Kindest regards. And he signed off on it. This was part of, it shows you the history of the Sunset. This was part of what I've referred to in the past as the Chitlin Circuit. And I gave my staff, hold the book up, and I'm happy, I would love to get a copy for all of the commissioners, just so you can read it. This is fascinating reading on how the Chitlin Circuit, loosely organized group of black clubs organized all over the South and in the West for probably 30 years. During segregation, this is how you worked your way through the territory. They had things they called territory bands, and the bands moved through a certain part of the area, and there were places they could go and play, and the Sunset was certainly one of them. So you can see, this is evidence of exactly that. Here's a band, Erskine Hawkins, he's coming through the area. We're reaching out to you, we want to book him. Erskine Hawkins, he did a tune called Tuxedo Junction, by the way, in the late '30s. And this is what we have today. So in 2017, this is the building that we acquired, of course. We got it a little bit before that. There's an apartment building there, which is gone now. And what we wanted to do was, as we approached, looking at the Sunset and what we were going to do with it, the conversation was, we got a grant from the Knight Foundation called the Cities Challenge Grant, national award. And they ask you a series of questions. And one of the questions was, what are your biggest threats for the facility? And of course, when you do historic restoration, preservation work, and I've done this with REG and Rick for a number of years now, for literally decades in a number of projects, but the challenges are typically pretty much the same. There are two major challenges. If the termites stop holding hands, the building falls down. Or typically, they are building a roadway through town, and of course, your building, which was built 100 years ago, is sitting right in the middle of where the new highway wants to go. We didn't have either of those problems here. This is where you want to be in a hurricane. It is a fortress. It was the largest, probably, concrete ballroom in the southeast at the time it was built. And they certainly advertised it as such. It was safe. Back in the '30s, they had a fire on this entire block, and every building on the block burned down except Sunset. So she's a keeper. So in this particular instance, the challenge was, not those things, but the challenge was, what if we go over and spend literally millions of dollars of the public's money, of your money, of the community's money, and the community doesn't accept it? That's our challenge. What if we go and do this thing for the community instead of doing it with the community, and they do not accept it? So therein lies the first challenge, aside from just the physical challenges. When we acquired the property, we got, number one is the Sunset itself, and then there's an apartment building below it. And then we also acquired the block in front of it. And at the time, there were three or four apartment buildings there. Subsequent to this shot, we've also acquired the northern half of the block that the Sunset's on as well. So we own literally those two blocks and some other property south of us on Seventh Street there. So that's what we're looking at. So the first thing we started doing was talking to the community. We could have been, at this point, with you, showing you plans and things a year before we are doing it right now. And we took that year to deliberately go out and engage the community and go and talk to them about what they wanted to see and the kind of things that they wanted, the activities and what they wanted to build. And I have to do a shout-out to Alicia now. Alicia has taken the lead on our community engagement program and has been fabulous doing it. So she has her PhD in applied cultural anthropology. I didn't even know what that was. I'm not sure I still do. And here's what we did. Alongside the various foundations we were working with, we were asking people, what do you want to see here? What do you want to do here? And that sort of thing. And we didn't ask them to fill out a lot of surveys, which we knew they weren't going to do. We wanted to make it really simple. Just show us right now what you want to see. What do you do in the northwest? Why are you here? All of these kinds of things. And you see, just, not because I picked this slide, but that upper-right one says, how many years have you spent there? Nobody's here a little bit of time. Everybody's here a long time. So we've got engaged communities. And in a community which is primarily absentee-owned rental property, this is significant. There are a lot of people over there that rent for decades, literally. So because it's rental property doesn't mean that they're not engaged in your community. We did a pop-up park event, in which we literally built all of the furniture with the community members and had great events. And again, during this entire process, and there were dozens and dozens of these kinds of events and meetings, during the entire process, we're talking the entire time about what we want to do here. What do you want to do here? And what do you want to see here?
I think one of the most exciting things is that the people who are involved are people who actually live in the neighborhood. And that, thanks to Alicia and you and the others, getting those people out to talk about their own neighborhood.
Right.
So important.
Well, that's the spin-off, too. You were just talking about the spin-off to the neighborhood from the educational programs that we're doing at Northmore. The spin-off in this community from just, from not only redoing this, is that we have a much more engaged community. Before, there weren't people over there that felt they had a voice that needed to be heard in City Hall, or who do I talk to, and that sort of thing. So the attitude in the community about everything in general, forget the Sunset, is much improved and much changed. I think the chief would agree to that. So after we had a series of meetings with them, then we did a park mock-up, in which we took that vacant land, we'd torn down all of the apartment buildings, and we just wanted to do a mock-up event where we took the things, the input that they told us and the kinds of things they wanted to see, and we wanted to try them. So we had street painting, lots of educational opportunities. The kids had a fabulous time. I will tell you that that swing never had fewer than three kids on it at any time. And the success of the project was that they literally broke the swing. I don't know how you break a tire swing, but they broke the swing. Great concert. And here's the takeaway. Family building in the park. This is what was going on here. It was a community coming together in a place where they'd never had this kind of an activity, never had this kind of an asset, and anticipating and looking forward to the day when they would have something like this. And this spoke volumes to me. The question was, do you feel weird being across the street from the Sunset? It was a bar, legendary, and all this kind of thing, and here's a park there. Is that going to make you feel weird playing here? And the kid says, "I feel welcome to relax. I can't wait to come back. I feel like I finally have a place to come." So this is the community reaction before we even get started. So now, we're engaged. Selective demolition is what's going on right now at the Sunset itself. And this is a panoramic shot of the ballroom that I just showed you, full of folks. In the 1970s, they built it as two floors of apartments. And so what we're doing now, the first thing that we did was, we had to go in and clean up primarily all of the black mold and conditions that were existing upstairs, lots of leaks in the ceilings, been leaking for years, and the apartments. And you can see, interesting in this picture, the difference in the two colors, it's the first and second floor of the ballroom. So we're still tearing things out and looking at conditions of ceilings and things like that. Some of the boards will need to be replaced. We're looking at, getting started on that very soon. And as we're doing this, we came across this great piece of work. No dancing in the balcony. Can you imagine? I don't know what that was for. I do know what it was for. They didn't want it to fall down. The interesting thing that we can't determine, we hadn't figured it out yet, is you can see, it says west on it, too. All four sides of the room had north, southeast, and west on it. So I guess maybe you got your tickets, you sat on the north side or west side or whatever it was, and they had numbers around the room. So we're going to preserve that, of course, in some fashion. We're not sure how the finishes are going to work and all, but anything that's indicative of the history of the facility will be preserved. And it got us to here with the work of REG and Darren in particular, Darren Ingles. This is the existing, on the left, of course, Sunset Ballroom. And on the right, a 7,000, more or less, square foot addition to the facility. And the ballroom and lounge itself are about 14,000 square feet. 14? Am I right? And the work, here's a site plan, a site plan. Down the bottom, you can see the Sunset, the addition, and then the additional space that we've acquired to the north is where parking will be. And we're also creating an entrance to the facility on the north side, too. So you can enter from the parking lot and come straight in the back. So what we have in mind, obviously, is safety, security, lots of parking availability for everybody. It'll be surrounded by a picket fence of some sort. We'll have great security, but also a good way to get right in and out instead of having to go around the block. Now, this is hard to read, I know, but the original building is, of course, on the left here, and then the 7,000-square-foot addition to the right is here. I'm showing you the first floor. The lower portion of this is the bar itself. Now, when we acquired the building, the entire first floor was a bar. What we're envisioning now is using the lower half, more or less, as the bar, and then we're going to introduce food service there as well. In the old days, in the '30s, they used to get the food from like, places like the Silver Kitchen or something like that. People would bring food in. So there was no control food or consistency of it. Larry Fields was running Wednesday Night Clambakes and things like that in the parking lot, literally. So there's never been food service here, never a kitchen. So the main complaints in the Sunset are no kitchen, and the bathrooms were in abysmal shape. I mean, abysmal shape. So most of the new wing will be taken up by those kinds of support services. A major commercial kitchen on the first floor, big bathrooms, and also a great entrance way. The good thing about, I want to point out about this shot, is for church folks that do not want to necessarily go into a lounge, but take advantage of the restaurant there, they'll be able to take and go in on the entrance on the right there into the new building. There'll be a specific entrance. You go in and down a hallway and go right into the restaurant. You don't have to go into the bar. Want to have a drink with your meal? You should, but you don't have to go in through the bar itself to bring the family and things like in there. So we hope that that will encourage a lot more folks that haven't been using it to use it in the future. Second floor, this is the ballroom. And of course, the ballroom is going to have be restored to. It's great wooden floor. It's all concrete now, of course. And then to the right, that strip down there is a pre-function area. And you'll recall, when you go to the Civic Center, for instance, you're waiting on the outside in the hallways to go in. They do the pre-functions in the hallway, and this is envisioned to be that same kind of a feel. You'll have an area where bars can be set up or food service a little bit while they're waiting to go into an event, like a concert and that sort of thing. And then, of course, the third floor is not truly a third floor. It's the mezzanine of the second floor, and that's the mezzanine around the outside. You see the stage at the end. And this will lead out onto a roof garden, which they never had before in the new addition. So there'll be bathrooms out there, the green room for the entertainers, which, again, they never had, will be in part of the new facility. And then the majority of that, to the right-hand side, will be a great roof garden to take it back to where they started from. It's the Sunset Roof Garden all over again, 80 years later. So we have the preliminary guaranteed maximum price is being developed as we speak. All of these things are moving on us. We have just now gotten to the point in the design that you're seeing today. These are all plans that I literally got Friday. So this is brand-new stuff. As we're going along with that, Jackie and his team are developing a guaranteed maximum price for the renovation of the facility. So we're functioning right now in kind of a hail mary $6.2 million estimate for historic renovations and restoration work. The $6.2 million is fully budgeted in the CRA's 2017, 18, and 19 budgets. And I wanted to point out that the CRA has acquired a million-dollar grant, two $500,000 grants from the state of Florida to help us fund this. They have, we have an opportunity, perhaps, to get another $500,000 from them, but they've changed the rules a little, so we may not qualify this year. But that's where we are in the Sunset.
Great. Questions for Ms. Ward?
As I go on, you can see in this street view, up at the top is the Sunset. The green square is across the street from, just to the south of the Sunset, is the new Heart and Soul Park, which is also being designed. Joelle's here. She's showing us today kind of an estimated rendering of what the park might look like. And of course, that significant tree that we've got, it's not as easy to appreciate what it will be in the floor plan here, but you can see that there's a meandering, kind of a piano keys feel to the sidewalk as it goes through the park itself, and it's divided into play areas. There are, let's see if it shows, this will show up on me. In this area, there's playground equipment and a little mound for a hill here, and this is a big open area. And then there'll be parking in addition to that down here, head-end parking, which I think you can see in the sketch there, on the right there. That'll be those kind of cement blocks with grass growing through it, so it'll still have the feel of the park, but it'll have the opportunity of some close-end parking in the front there. The key to the Heart and Soul Park, and we've had a whole series of meetings with the community to help plan this facility as well, but the key to this thing is the art component to it. This is going to tell, through a series of murals on these small walls and messages in the concrete, on the sidewalks and things, it's going to tell the story of the African-American experience in Palm Beach County, starting with the sticks and on through today, warts and all. It's the story that the community wants to tell. It's going to be done and executed by local African-American artists. It'll be done in a permanent material. So the park is going to be a great place to go and play, but it's also going to be a place to go and be educated, too. So we're pretty excited about that. So the art component will be very strong, and the story will be even stronger. Costs for the park design and build-out are budgeted $1,006,000. In our current 28 CRA budget, we think that we'll probably cover it. And again, we're at the point now where these designs, I literally got that elevation this morning, so the designs are evolving as we're going along. Numbers may move around a little bit, but we think that's a good number. And the third component of the conversation this morning, because they're all related, Sunset, Sunset Park, is down below it here is Sticks Alley. It's the, you can see the brown piece there. Sticks Alley does not exist today. You can see Seventh Street and an alleyway, which is this. This is the Queen of Shiba. And everybody knows the Queen of Shiba Restaurant. So we were looking at ways to create a mixed-use development that supported the activities of the Queen of Shiba, and again, gave them additional business opportunities in the area. So we are carving out an alleyway and on, let's see, the buildings there, let's look at one more. I want to show you this. These are pairs of shotgun-like wooden structures. The ones on the top are closer to Seventh Street, and the ones that are closer to Seventh Street will retain the look of classic shotgun houses in the same wood structure, and we'll show you a rendering on it in a second there. And then we'll contemporize the lower half. And the vision here is that these pieces, as you can see, as you can see in the elevation, on the top line, you can see just a classic, again, shotgun, which would be the northernmost structures, and then the more contemporary one to the rear there. You can see how they live together. And the vision is that for potential uses in this mixed-use piece, on the left side, we see the use potentially of a restaurant, where you could have the kitchen facility back in the back unit, and then the front unit is where you serve inside, and then maybe there's... live together. And the, and the vision is that for potential uses in this mixed-use piece, on the left side, we see the use potentially of a restaurant, where you could have the kitchen facility back in the back unit, and then the front unit is where you serve inside. And then maybe there's some outdoor seating as well. The center one is a live-work option, where you could have bedroom and bathrooms, and your living facility in the rear portion, and then move to the front and have an operating business there, whether it's, you know, some sort of a boutique or shop. And on the right-hand side, you see a retail option, where both of those ends are retail stores. So the vision here is that we want to position this so that the community, we've had great interest, by the way, on this already. We want the, to have the ability to sell these at some point to the business owners and have them participate in ownership. And that's really the key to making this thing work. It's possible that you could have partners to go in this each, that had two businesses, and each one could have one of each. You could have a guy that, that bought the entire thing and leased out a portion of it, or something like that. But we're just now examining the potential uses for the facility. I think, I think Alfonso did a fabulous job coming up with this concept. And again, you can see here how the classic, on the right, shotgun feeling lives with the contemporary to the rear. And we think that mix is going to make it architecturally very interesting and be very attractive to potential users. We are going to take the, the one existing shotgun that was able to be rehabilitated and relocated a little bit to the west there as part of this complex. And we'll rehab it and get it set up for a yoga studio that's already shown interest in coming in there. So with that, we're estimating relocation rehab of the shotgun structures at $1,003,000. We've, we've got $855,000 in our current budget anticipating this. And of course, then next year's budget, we'll finish funding it, if you're supportive of it. The alleyway costs themselves and Seventh Street in front of this project, Seventh Street is an ongoing phased project to rebuild Seventh. And we've already done the first phase on it, from Tamaran to Division. And then we'll go from Rosemary to Sappidilla in this phase, too. Eventually, a year after this, probably will have entire Seventh Street rebuilt. And those will be funded by the CRA bond that's pending, subject to your approval. So that's the three projects.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay, questions? You overwhelmed us with information.
Well, I've got all my experts here for questions.
I just have a comment. I've attended a few of the community meetings and didn't know the extent of it, but just wanted to say thank you for doing that. I think that that will help with the success of this project tremendously.
Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner James?
Thank you. This is very exciting, exciting for that part of our city. Where are we in terms of timing? How much longer for demolition? And when can we start seeing shovel and dirt?
Commissioner, we've, we've already started the selective demolition at the Sunset itself. We've still got work to do on that. The roof in particular is, and of course, we're in the rainy season, and the roof in particular is in, I won't say bad shape, it's in fair to middling shape. But there, we're going to have to pull out some of the decking material. And we're going to include that as part of our next demolition phase. So not only, we can't go in and demolish the roof and pull out everything without rebuilding it. So we're going ahead and, and including that in the next phase of that. And that should start, what are we projected it, starting? Yeah. Jackie, you've got to come up here and speak into the microphone, please, sir. No, just sit down right there. And now, let me make a comment, too, while he's coming up. Cooper Construction, aside from the fact that we've selected them as our contractors, have also, have also committed to us that they're going to move their headquarters' facilities to the historic Northwest.
All right.
And the building there themselves.
Seventh and...
Tamaran, is it?
Yeah. Seventh and Tamaran.
Wonderful.
So we're expected to be there probably within the next 24 months or less. So, but to answer the question regarding the roofing project commencement, we're scheduled to start that within the next two weeks. There's some specialty material. The pearlings are a special-treated wood. So those are items that are shelf items. So we're currently working with the roofing subcontractor to procure those materials now. And as soon as those materials hit the site, that's when we'll actually start the roofing.
When will it be done?
Done. Well, we have...
No comment.
Well, we have in the schedule, 12-month construction duration. So as soon as the drawings are 100% CDs, and we are issued the permit, we anticipate 12-month duration.
Thank you. Commissioner Shoff?
Thank you. Is there a place where I can get a one-stop shop of what our project costs here? Understanding we're talking about historic renovation in particular, which can change quite frequently, between the acquisition of land and the different phases of projects, is there an overview somewhere that maybe I just haven't been privy to?
We haven't, we haven't gotten one, because all of this is moving targets, Commissioner.
For this project or for all project?
For this project.
Oh, okay.
Up to this point, all we've had is the initial acquisition of the dirt, and we've had demolition costs. And now we're having soft costs from the architects. So it's kind of growing as we go along. As I indicated, his, his price is a guaranteed maximum price. So he wants to be rock-hard on it. So as he gets his information, literally, we have weekly meetings with our architect and with the contractors, and they're developing that. So when I get a little closer, I'll put together a site there. Everybody can review on that. But right now, those are moving targets. We literally are getting numbers from the park designers and from Alfonso on Sticks Alley as we go through the project. So as we decide on a design, it looks like it's appropriate, we like the way it works. He works up some hail mary numbers. They're never right, so then we have to go and do some...
Well, maybe when you get all the information, you could do something like we've done for our capital projects. We just lay out a timeline of what's being done when. So if you go into the website, look at the capital projects that we have. Maybe we could do something similar for this one. Commissioner Nearing?
Just a quick, thank you for the update. A question that, not necessarily for today, but a question that I've asked before. You know, we talked about selling the shotgun homes and to local businesses, which I think is a really good idea. The Sunset in particular, you know, one day I'm hoping to get this question answered in terms of what is going to be our philosophy five years from now, 10 years from now, around the city and its ownership of the Sunset. Again, not for today, but I think a really, really important question to the community about, as best as we can, you know, looking into the future, knowing that conditions change, et cetera, et cetera. But what is the goal of this administration, of this group of folk we're here today, in terms of how we think about this project a decade from now?
I can tell you, short-term, none of us want to run. None of us think the city or the CRA ought to run the Sunset when it's up and functioning. That we need outside professional people to do that.
It's a two-part, it's a two-part question, Commissioner. And the mayor is absolutely right. I have absolutely no desire to run a nightclub. But we may have the ultimate responsibility for it in the interim period while we're doing a transfer. But on a long-term basis, the vision is that we are going to establish in this next year a community foundation, much like the community foundation that exists over here in Hollywood. The community foundation will be looking at projects and ownership of things, investments in this community. And we would like for, at some point, that community foundation and this community to own this building. Now, how we get there is the conversation. How do we recoup some portion of this, literally, $8 million-plus-dollar investments that we are doing in this, in this community? But the goal is for the community to own it and find a way for it to grow and become more valuable, and for them to participate in that appreciation. And that's the whole thought process between all of these buildings that we bring to you, is how do we ultimately not own them anymore? The question the community asks me is, how much of this do we want to own? And the answer is none. We don't want to own any of it. But the goal of the redevelopment agency is that we do things that the private sector will not do. And I will tell you that it is fundamentally unsound as a business investment to go over and buy this club in this neighborhood right now. You can't do it, you can't make money in it, and we know that. But that's the goal of government, is to do the kinds of things that are the right things to do for the community that you can't get the private sector to do. So let's find a way to, to invest in it, and that community foundation will get us there. And it'll be made up of, of folks from within and without of the community. And it'll have two components. Frankly, one of them will be a governance kind of a body, and the other will be fundraising, because this will not, I will tell you right now, this will, if you don't remember anything else I say, this will not support itself. Cultural, cultural facilities do not support themselves through earned income. So we will never sell enough tickets to the ballroom shows to support the ongoing operations. Certainly, the bar will, will mitigate much of this. The bar and the restaurant, we hope it's successful. I will tell you, I'm talking with Marcus, Marcus Samuelson right now, about the potential of doing something like that. But we'll, we'll be talking in the next year, while we're doing the building, we'll be talking about operations. And that's the only conversation next year. It's while this is being built, we'll be talking about how do we, short-term and long-term, operate this thing. Because the day they move out is the day we ought to be having somebody in there putting liquor on the shelves and...
Okay, thank you. One more question. Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. At the community meetings, we talked a lot about hiring local and engaging the local workforce. Can you give us an update on that?
I'll have Veronica answer that question.
Thank you, Commissioner Lambert, for that question. So yes, at the first two community meetings that we held at Ubikinsey Cultural Community Center, we did talk about engaging the community, making sure that there is workforce on the ground. We aren't at that stage yet where we're going to have active workers. Once we move past the roofing stage, we will have a community meeting that specifically works towards the subcontractors that will be on through the duration of construction. So we'll have additional meetings for that. We'll have our subcontractors reach out directly to the community, making sure that there's some kind of job fair that will employ the community that are available and interested in working on the project.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Good job.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Green, did you have something you wanted to bring up? Auditor?
Yeah, well, if you, so...
I need to excuse myself, because I have somebody waiting for me. But this is for you and the commission anyway, so...
Sure.
Thank you, everyone.
So here's our chance at a public meeting to kind of talk about where we are on the auditor situation. I think I mentioned to you that we had kind of a consensus that wasn't quite complete. We had basically three votes in favor of Beverly, and then two other votes that were kind of split. And so I kind of throw it to the commission to kind of give us direction on where you'd like to go with that. So here's your chance.
I can start. So if this were a Monday night, and we were voting that way, it would pass. So I would be supportive of the three. You said we had three that were supportive of Beverly.
Of Beverly, that's right.
And two that were split, did I hear?
We had one for one candidate and one for the other candidate, so...
I think it's Beverly. I mean, from my perspective, I think it's, it's three votes.
I just wanted all of you to kind of give us direction. And if that is the direction that we get from this meeting, then we will prepare something and bring it back to you for a vote. If that's what I, it looks like everybody's nodding their head. So I wanted to also take this opportunity to let you know that we are in the process of, I'm sure you'll all be happy to hear, upgrading our television station and our audio. We're going to try and set some dates. It's going to mean that we're going to be out of the commission chambers for about three weeks. We're going to try and do that in October. That we think that was the best timeframe that we could come up with. But be aware of that, and that will mean we won't be televising meetings during that block. But as we finish that project up, we'll give you some updated timelines. That's all I had.
Did you get enough feedback?
Yes, it looks like everybody nodded their head, so... Thank you.
Oh, is it? Yes.